Twenty twenty-three, the invocation will be given by Dr. John Bining, Youth Counseling Services. Pledge of Allegiance will be given by Commissioner Louis Alford. Please stand.
Father, we are grateful today for your goodness and your mercies to us. For the leadership of your spirit in our daily lives, and we pray the leadership of your spirit in our county's life and national life. We thank you for your blessings upon us as a nation, as a city and county. Today, when the scream is become woke, I pray tonight for an awakening that you would awaken us, that you would awaken us to the word, the ways, and the will of God. Awaken us to who we are as persons and as a country. We pray that our hearts would be open, our minds fixed upon the things of the Lord. Awaken us, oh God, in this time. I pray as part of that awakening, Lord, your blessing upon men and women like those who sit on this commission. I pray that you would extend to them the wisdom of the Lord and the heart of the Lord for the people of this county. Those who are in need tonight, those who are the down and out, help us to know what to do and how to do it. We pray for blessings upon us all and upon these proceedings, and we ask this in your name. And amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Rogers.
Here.
Winters.
Here.
Beatty.
Hughes.
Here.
Alford.
Cry.
Here.
Blake.
Here.
Collins.
Here.
Gilbert.
Here.
Thompson. Goins.
Here.
Slater.
Here.
Mason.
Here.
Ledford.
Here.
It's thirteen present and one absent.
Thank you. I'd like to have a motion for the approval of the minutes, please, second. Commissioner Beatty on the second, any discussion?
And who made the motion? I'm sorry.
Motion was Goins.
Okay.
Second was Beatty.
Thank you.
Call the roll, please.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Here.
Yeah.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
It's thirteen in favor, none opposed, and one absent.
Thank you. Report from the county mayor, Mayor Davis, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, everyone. We have a special guest with us tonight that I'll introduce here in just a second. Some of you may already know him. The proclamation reads, whereas Bennett George, a junior at Walker Valley High School, whereas at Walker Valley, he is the president of the Rock Climbing Club, a member of the National Honor Society, the Beta Club, the Circle of Champions, and Chamber Choir. He began recreational kayaking at nine years of age, whereas he entered his first competitive kayak tournament in October of two thousand eighteen at the Ocoee Whitewater Center. Whereas he has been diligent in training and competition for the last five years, and whereas he recently competed in the twenty twenty-three U.S. Junior Team Trials, earning third place spot by less than one second. Whereas he will now represent the United States at the World Championships in Poland later this year in August. Now therefore, I D Gary Davis, Bradley County Mayor, do hereby proclaim Monday, May the first, twenty twenty-three, to be Bennett George Day throughout Bradley County. Let's give him a warm hand. Bennett, do you want to come to the podium and explain about rock climbing or anything? That's, that's fine.
I just wanted to say, uh, thank you all for the award, and, uh, you know, I worked very hard to get to where I am today, and I know that kayaking is not something people normally think about as a sport, but I just wanted to say thank you for acknowledging my, uh, third place finish in the sport. Thank you all for that.
Well, congratulations and good luck in August.
Thank you.
If you could meet here in the front, we'll get a picture with the proclamation.
Have his parents. Family.
He needs a family.
He needs a family.
Yeah.
Also, R.
Oh, well, thank you.
I want mine signed, please. Yeah.
It's not a stamp. I made him sign them all.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Pass them down. Pass them down, pass them down. Oklahoma City.
There might be some extra. So many people drinking whitewater in Oklahoma City.
They should build a course.
They spent seventy-eight million dollars to build a course right next to them.
We actually found out he's qualified in his training. Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Again, Bennett, congratulations and good luck in August in Poland. The trip itself will be pretty exciting, won't it? Okay, a couple of things I have, um, y'all have a, a chart that looks like the boxes, the AARP. This is an update of the AARP plan. We've brought you updates, this is the second time now, making, uh, some changes to the original plan. As things have been mentioned that they, that you all would like to be in the AARP budget proposal, they weren't in the plan, so we've had to update the plan to be prepared for that. What we've really done here, if you've got, looking at the charts, what's in yellow is the only thing that's being affected. We've moved some money from the public water bucket down to the, what's called the COVID response bucket. And then the things in the yellow in that bucket, the eight hundred thousand for L-Rod lights, a hundred and ten thousand for fire and rescue generator and vehicle, and so forth down through there are things that are being added to the plan. Now keep in mind, that doesn't give me authorization to spend any of these monies. It just puts it in the plan. They'll be coming back to you either in the form of a budget proposal or, or so forth to, to actually approve the spending. But these are the possibilities as we know it today, so I respectfully ask that you approve the plan update.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Commissioner Rogers, do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Hughes, get you next, sir. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Um, we have a question.
Go ahead, sir, go ahead.
Mayor, um, on the, the utility grant, the one that quote-unquote not necessarily have money, I'm just worried that they're behind.
They, um, on that, they have notified us that it's been approved to that amount, eight million, six hundred and fifty thousand, oh eleven, uh, probably a couple of weeks ago, and that we would be getting a contract in the next thirty days. So it is finally moving, but yeah, that ones, uh, a lot of those people are antsy. A lot of them have already taken bids and gonna have to rebid and so forth, but, uh, that eight million utility grant. And we're not sure how that's gonna work as far as is it gonna be a reimbursement? I doubt that we will get the money on it like we did the other rest of the AARP. I'm expecting it to be a reimbursement thing. We're not sure until we get that grant, but it is moving at least.
I understand that, um, these are very good estimates, but as we found out in finance, they, what we think something will cost, it actually happened. So I guess my question, uh, former, is there a contingency in some of these? Well, I guess overall.
Most all of those are probably gonna go over those original, but those are the amounts that we were able to give them through the AARP grant. Uh, take Hi-Wise Utilities, for example, two point one million. I'm sure it's gonna be more than that now, but that'll be up to them. They're getting two point one million from the grant, and they know that. Um, and that's probably the case with those others throughout there also, especially Ocoee, uh, Hi-Wise Utilities, because they've been wanting to move on it desperately for some time now. And as, as you know, the inflation, it keeps going up, but that won't change ours. That's the amount of our grant, the eight point six.
So basically, there is some whatever continues, but last question, I guess, is some of these are in the elected officials or department heads' budget requests, so we can obviously go into the budget request and zero those out.
Right. Yeah, the, the ones in yellow are things that you've requested, different people have requested to be in the budget proposal, and so we're putting them in the plan, so they can be in the budget proposal, but that's when you will approve or disapprove them at that time. You can always take them out.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
And I might mention, Commissioner Alford, the BMX pickleball, that's fifty pickleball roughly, and fifteen BMX. Uh, yeah, that one, that one is in there, another ambulance is in there. A lot of thing, most everything, there's some smaller items that I've put in one eighty-nine, but we're trying to get all of those capital things out of the budget to get the general fund down, uh, where it will work this year, and so that's where most of them are going, right there.
Mayor, you got twenty twenty-three next to these. Is that just the, the timing of when you're earmarking the money, or is that when the project's gonna be done?
No, um, well, let's go back up to, uh, L-Rod Park. Well, they can't happen until after July the first, and then things like the ambulance probably ought to have twenty-four on it, because it'll be ordered after the budget's approved, but won't be here until who knows when.
Uh, twenty-eight, two hundred and eighty thousand?
Yes. By the way, our last one that has been budgeted for some time is supposed to be here any time now, and then this is a new one for next year, but probably won't be here till twenty-four, sometime in twenty-four. Other questions?
So all these are, sorry, so all these are gonna be after June, before they start, or July?
Yeah, all of the ones in yellow will be in, will probably be in the budget proposal for July first. When you approve the budget is when you're authorizing to do them. That's one, but that, this is just the plan that we have to have in place to be going by.
Commissioner Winters.
Mr. Chairman, uh, thank you. Mr. Mayor, the COVID response area you have there at the bottom, you have remaining balance.
Right.
For some of us that sit on committees and boards that are needing funds, how do we approach these four hundred and five thousand dollars? Is that still, uh, out there for review?
That's money left for the commission to spend, that four hundred thousand, and there's also one point two left in the water bucket.
So would we meet with our committees and then in turn chat with you, or how do you, how do you prefer that?
Once you request it, I'll come back and update the plan if it's not in there now. But giving an example on the, on the water one, you all approved a deadline of September the thirtieth, I believe. Uh, and the reason I ask for that to be done is at that time, you'll be approving the list up to September the thirtieth, and that'll leave an amount that will come out of that and be moved down to the COVID bucket also. And then what's in the COVID bucket is money that you have the leeway to spend, as long as it meets AARP requirements, but you know, you can pick your projects.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Slater.
Mayor, I'm requesting that we add additional money to affordable housing.
Well, at, when we know what's left of the water bucket, uh, that, that would be fine with me. There's probably gonna be a big chunk. There's one point two left, there's probably, I don't, you have any idea what requests you have so far? I'm looking at you, Lori, uh, you're compiling a list of water projects between now and September. They're not gonna be that big a projects, so there's probably gonna be a close to a million dollars left to go somewhere. Yeah. And we'll, we'll come back to you at that time, then you all will decide where you want to do it.
Commissioner Winters.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the reason I asked was basically the nursing home is where I, uh, the nursing home board is where I've been for twelve years, and they've gone through the COVID crisis and are still dealing with much of that, so that would be where we should be looking at.
Ideally, capital projects for nursing home, but yeah, it'd just be so much easier on the reporting, but, uh, or, like in affordable housing, it's a donation to an agency where they have to be responsible for it. One or the other. The other questions?
I have one question.
Commissioner Blud.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Gary, the, uh, on the sewer over here, the hundred and thirty-five thousand remaining, that's earmarked money. I mean, that's gonna be used for sewer, correct? That's not money we can put with the one point two million.
It possibly, we won't know until closer to the end. What was the timeframe on the septic, end of the year, Adam? Yeah, but they gotta be committed by the end of the year. So the, I'll, I'll report on that in a minute. If we've completed, if we've gotten everybody approved that has applied, then we might not need that. But if we've gotten to the point where there's more people wanting to apply, then that hundred and thirty-five is there, or you could still take some from the water bucket too, if you needed. I, I think you all's intention is we'll do however many septics there are, but it's gotta be in a, a time. Then they gotta be committed, I think, from memory by the end of this year, so they'll be finished.
I have one more question. Uh, Adam, what is the, uh, time, the, the end date on the sewer projects? What, what date was that?
You all approved a cutoff of the end of this year, and the projects have to be completed by the end of next year.
December thirty-first, then?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other comment? We have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yeah.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yeah.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
It's thirteen in favor, none opposed, and one absent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and on the septic program, um, you've probably already seen it, but a hundred and ninety-eight properties in process, eleven sewer hookups, seventy-one permits issued, sixty-one contracts with construction having begun, twenty-five projects have been completed. We've spent five hundred and eleven thousand of the seven fifty, so there's another two hundred and thirty-eight thousand to go. And again, you'll have money to add to it if the need is there. Any questions about any of that? If not, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Uh, before we go to the consent agenda, I'd like to recognize Dr. Cash, Director of Schools, and Mike Griffith, Chamber of Commerce. Thank you for, for attending. Uh, consent agenda, do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Beatty on the second, Goins on the motion. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
It's thirteen in favor, none opposed, and one absent.
Thank you very much. Uh, at this time, we'll go to the reports from the committees and our districts. We'll start on our left with Commissioner Rogers, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this past weekend, had the honor of, uh, coming downtown and experiencing the Relay for Life event. Um, heard this morning that, um, they've raised over a hundred thousand dollars, and that was by a lot of donations here and, and from, from, uh, from this commission donated, and a lot of people around this community as well, and just, and I know Tommy's gonna speak on this, and just was excited to be there, and Commissioner Mason was there, Commissioner Beatty was there, Commissioner Gilbert, and I think there was maybe a few more, and got the chance to cheer Tommy on, and, uh, wanted to bring him a present tonight of a, of an ice cream sandwich after he, uh, after he, uh, ate, uh, about, I think it was eight or nine ice cream sandwiches during that event, and I've got more in a bag down here for everyone else, but it was a great thing. Um, so much money was raised during that ice cream eating contest, and, and it's just a great way to show nonprofit organizations getting creative, to try and create ways to raise funds. Um, I, I would assume that every person in this room tonight and every person watching has been affected by cancer in one way or another, whether it's a family member, a loved one. Um, I know my dad fought cancer. I've had three grandparents that have passed away from battling cancer. Um, and this organization, to be able to raise over a hundred thousand dollars to fight cancer, um, is just remarkable, and it just shows the spirit, um, and the heart that Bradley County and people in Bradley County have, uh, for the nonprofits in this community, uh, to be able to help them. So, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have tonight, but I just wanted to say, uh, thank you to Commissioner Ledford for, for all that he did for this wonderful organization.
Did he, did he eat the volume that it took to throw up?
Uh, well, there was a couple there, and I'm sure Commissioner Mason can get into it, and we, we sat back and watched a few gentlemen and, and ladies that, we were looking for the puke bucket, unfortunately. It, it got pretty nasty, but it was.
Sweating it out.
It was a, it was a lot of sweating it out, but it was a good time.
That's great.
I was worried about the cheerleaders that were down front, keeping an eye out that something might happen, so, but no, it was a good time.
That's great. Commissioner Ledford, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, yeah, I don't really, anybody can have this ice cream sandwich if you want it. Anyway, but I, I did have fun, and we did raise, had huddle this morning at the hospital, uh, the total, and this is not everything, a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, and this commission supported me with a, a total of nine hundred and thirty dollars. Um, and I had a five hundred dollar anonymous, uh, donation on that, but I, I do appreciate it. I've been associated with the, uh, American Cancer Society Relay for Life for many, many years. Uh, Josh, you're exactly right. Uh, cancer has touched, uh, a lot of lives over the years, and took a lot of lives over the years. Um, that's just life as it is, you know, working in the operating room for many, many years. Um, uh, i- it's not a kind disease. It, it don't have any kindness to it at all. Anyway, getting back to my, uh, report here, condolences to Steve Beal, the family of Steve Beal. He was a longtime judge here. Uh, and my boss's father, Mr. Hannah, he passed away. We just came from the funeral home this morning, so keep them in your prayers. Uh, of course, I was gonna talk about the relay, had a great time. I appreciate Tim and Scotty and all of them that was there supporting, I appreciate that. Um, I wasn't really gonna mention this, but I will. May first is a, is a good day and a, and a bad day for me. May first, six years ago, my mother passed away. And then, May first, forty-four years ago, I started work at Bradley Memorial Hospital. Okay, May third is the election, uh, well, is one-year anniversary of our election. Um, and I just wanted to send out a thank you to all the constituents of the sixth district that allowed me the privilege and give me the honor to serve the sixth district. I, um, worked very hard over the years, uh, from two thousand and six, two thousand and ten, two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and eighteen, um, to get this race, and, and the people seemed fit to give me that honor. Uh, but I wanted to thank a few people. The number one person I wanna thank is my wife back here. Without her, none of this would have ever been possible, uh, because the push that she gave every day, even though I would, didn't want to, she would still push me. And, um, then I wanna thank Bobby Goins. Bobby, I met him in two thousand and fourteen when he ran for this office, and Bobby's always encouraged me and supported me, so I thank Bobby Goins for, for always being there for me, and I always, you know, I'd get so disheartened whenever I'd lose, and he's like, Tommy, just next time, next time. So I appreciate Bobby Goins for, for his support and his encouragement. Never, never discouraged me, I always encouraged. And I also wanna thank Josh Rogers. Josh, when I got this seat, won this seat, and I thought, oh, my Lord, I'll never match up to this man right here, but, um, I've got a rude awakening sitting up here. Josh is not only a very humble and kind person, but he's also helped me so much that it's not even funny, 'cause I thought, man, this man with the knowledge base that he has, he, he'll destroy me, but he's nothing but been supportive on everything I've done, he's always been supportive. And not only is he a fellow commissioner, but he's also my friend. I wanna thank him. Last but not least, I wanna thank Tim. Tim's, uh, encouraged me from the start of this, uh, you know, I've known his family in the Realtown Club for years and years and years, but, uh, Tim and I have a big job in the sixth district, and, uh, we have a lot of complainers down there, but we take the issues, we try to get a solution to them. Tim told me from the start, I would get disgusted when one would come through and it wouldn't, we couldn't fix it, and Tim says, Tommy, you're not gonna be able to please everybody, you might as well get over it. You're gonna have people that love you one day and hate you the next. So I wanna thank Tim for his support and his family, Christie, and all those folks that supported me during the election, and, uh, thank goodness I know y'all, so thank goodness. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Mason, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, two, three things tonight. Um, I just wanna say a little bit about Bennett George. Um, well, I've known kid since he was five years old. I was the SRO at, met his mom, Denise, and she was a schoolteacher at Valley View, and, and Bennett was the, um, little kindergarten boy, and when you see these kids, you never know what they're gonna, uh, turn out to be. His kayaking is impressive, but as Mayor Davis read off, some of his, uh, classroom work is even more impressive to, to accomplish what he's done at Walker Valley High School also. I say kudos to, to Bennett for his classroom work, and I know he gets up early in the morning, so I'm proud of Bennett George for all his success. Um, last week was a Benestrative, I wasn't here last week, but it was Administrative Professionals Day. All of our secretaries, our ladies in Bradley County, I wanna say thank you for keeping Bradley County moving. Uh, we all see what you do day in and day out for, for this county. Uh, Missy Harrison, she, she's, she takes care of Tim Mason when it comes to, we do probably eighty, ninety pages for the, uh, State of Tennessee through TDOT, and, uh, when I took that on, that was a, uh, a big, big job to get done, uh, month after month. So it's been about eight years now, it's hard to believe it's been that long, but we've, uh, we've done well with that TDOT litter grant. We took it for places that we didn't think it could go. Uh, and last, Lori Motry, thanks for all you do for the county commission. Uh, wow, we, we sure would be lost without you. We, we appreciate you, and you're, you're not overlooked either. Um, Happy Principals Day in Bradley County schools, I heard today. Uh, thanks to all the principals in Bradley County for your hard work and dedication. We, we see you too. And, uh, it was an honor to be at the Relay for Life. Uh, my Aunt Connie Gladson, uh, she, she fought cancer for a long time. She was big, uh, for Relay for Life. Uh, miss her every day. Uh, my Mamaw Mason, uh, she fought, uh, breast cancer for, for years, and the list could go on and on with, uh, friends and family, and lastly, but not least, I wanna thank my rock, uh, my wife, Christie, for being here tonight. Uh, I'm right there with Tommy, that, it, and all of us, we, our wives and our husbands, they, um, they do, they do well for us, and we appreciate them. That's all I have, Chairman, thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Commissioner Slater.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Blake, are you gonna talk about the Keep America Beautiful, um, reward? No, you go ahead if you want to, I'm just not going to if you are. Is it on your list to talk about? Oh, okay, well. So Keep America Beautiful has begun a, um, like a, uh, it's like a, if you find someone that is illegally dumping tires and your tip leads to their arrest, then you'll be the recipient of a fifteen hundred dollar reward uh, for the conviction of someone who is legal, illegally dumping tires. So hopefully that will help and aid the stopping of the dumping of illegal tires. Also, as Commissioner Mason said, today's National, or, yeah, Principals Day. So I just wanna say thank you, y'all. Mason said, today's National, or yeah, Principals' Day. So I just wanna say thank you to all the principals in Bradley County. Thank you for setting high expectations for students and educators. As a principal, you shape the conditions for our teachers and students to learn and to succeed. And so, once again, thank you to all the principals in, in Bradley County schools. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Goins.
This district's doing good. They, I think we got our first crosswalk over there at Knapp in Wildwood that I know of. And is, is that fifteen hundred dollars? Is that just what Keep American Beautiful's doing?
I don't know. I'm gonna follow trucks around that's seeing where they're dumping their tires. Cause that's a new, uh...
Revenue, is that a new revenue stream for you?
It's income. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. That's why they call him the money man. Okay. Commissioner Gilbert, please.
Juvenile will be having a mentors meeting at the Avenue Church up above the juvenile on May the eighteenth at nine AM. And it was a whole lot of fun going around the courthouse and seeing all the vendors. And coming up on this corner over here, there was a big old huge U-Haul truck that had toilet paper and paper towels. And if you bought a toilet paper and paper towels, they'd even take them to your Bronco. So I bought some and Bowwater made them. We have a local company here in Cleveland, Tennessee that is called Resolute is the name of their toilet paper and paper towels. Support them. Support them. And I think they're in like your Dollar General stores and your small outlet stores. And go in there and support them. They're local. Help them out. Also, next week is Teacher Appreciation Day. And all the teachers in Bradley County and Cleveland and all the employees of Bradley County and Cleveland, teacher, if you work in the school system, come to the bakery and me and Steve Hartline are gonna give you a donut and a cup of coffee. All the nurses, we're gonna combine that. We're gonna put all the nurses, if you're a nurse here in Bradley County, Cleveland, wherever you work, if you're a nurse, come by the bakery. We're gonna give you a donut and a cup of coffee. That's the townhouse. And I just wanna say, Ms. Cash, we appreciate what you do. You do a fine job. It's, it's a hard thing to balance what you have to balance. The Pi Center, I went over there today and some of the young boys, I took them a truck over there to play with. And man, you ought to see this truck they brought out. I took them an old junk truck and they brought me a brand new one out. And it's just, it blows my mind what these kids are doing over there and it just excites me. And so, keep encouraging them, help them if you can. You're doing a fine job. And I also like for y'all to remember the Weathers family. Troy Weathers, his brother has passed away. And y'all just keep his family in your prayers. And that's it for me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Winters, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can't imagine getting in a kayak in Parksville River up there at six in the morning and making that kayak go through the water. I can't imagine that. This young man does that and many men more, so kudos to him. Last meeting, it was brought up by my colleague, Seventh District, Mr. Rogers regarding mowing along the Cleveland Middle School and our neighborhoods. Got in touch with Adam Castile, who's the director of TCAP Operations, I'm sorry, T, T-DOT Operations. And mowing has begun, began today. And I talked with him today before the meeting. He said they would continue mowing that, weather permitting and getting that completed. So thanks for bringing that up. And Adam is a local. Adam lives here in Cleveland, Tennessee and has really, really worked for, for us. Principal Days, it's Principal Day every day at my house. I've got principals coming and going. You know, school leadership is very important to the culture of the school. I'm sitting beside a principal here beside me. He knows exactly that. And Dr. Cash has led the, led the schools, you know, it's reading, writing, arithmetic, and that's a lot of social things. But principals build the culture, the culture in their schools. And I think our schools can match up with any schools in the state of Tennessee. And they get a lot of guff and a lot of pressure because the social world is changing so much. But kudos to them and to you, Dr. Cash, for your, your leadership and making all this happen. I can't let the cancer go by. Can, cancer issues, we are the poster, poster family for that. It's been in our, our family continually. And thanks to you that worked, worked for the raising those funds. But we have great doctors in this town. We've got men, men and women that save lives and it's a great place to live. That's, that's all I have on my list, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Collins, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanna say thank you to the Sheriff's Office. Had a great week last week. The inmate education program, I saw, and Commissioner Slater does great at sharing this, and so she keeps me apprised of this, but they had seven inmates that completed the culinary boot camp, which is a coordinated effort with Cleveland State. And that's incredible to see. The inmate education program is, is a big deal. Also, their engagement in the Charleston Elementary League graduation, which is law enforcement against drugs. And I think that's a phenomenal program that connects kids with not only substance abuse issues, but you know, peer pressure, conflict, conflict resolution, making positive choices. And so it's, it's incredible to see the relationship that our sheriff's department has with our schools and our students. And so I, I'm thankful for them and what they've done. Also thankful to Ms. Moul, Ms. Moultrie. We don't get to brag on her enough for her, the work that she does. As a new commissioner, she has been phenomenal to me and I'm very thankful for you, Lori. You're always there to answer the call or a text or an email, and she does great. So I'm very thankful for you, Ms. Lori. And of course, happy National School Principals' Day. There are a number of principals, eleven elementary schools, high schools, middle schools, but also our assistant principals who do a lot of toilet cleaning and vomit cleaning up and all the stuff that nobody notices. So we're very thankful for them. And the young ladies like Ms. Bynum from Charleston and Ms. Mason from Charleston, who are not principals per se, but certainly leaders in their school and do a great job of taking care of Mr. Kirk Campbell at Charleston Elementary School. So he gets all the glory and you guys show up at the commission meeting. So we're thankful for you guys. And Dr. Cash as well, who did a great job this morning of celebrating her administrators and the leaders in her county. I, I think it's, you know, phenomenal to recognize those folks and, and I'm thankful to be a part of that. So thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Blake, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, although you have a copy of a budget amendment, the Finance Committee voted unanimously to recommend approving amendment presented by Mayor Davis, decreases our fund one eighty-nine by ten thousand to contribute to the purchase of a vehicle for Bradley Cleveland Community Service Agency. Mayor explained the ten thousand will be recovered by, by decreasing the budget request for the upcoming year by the same amount. Mr. Chairman, I place this as a formal motion. Thank you.
Commissioner Slater on the second. Open for discussion. No discussion. Call the roll, please.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Thirteen in favor, none opposed, and one absent.
Thank you. That passes that amendment there, Mayor. Next, Mayor, if you don't mind, can we go back to the rescue plan real quick? Just one quick question. As I was studying and going over it, the hundred and forty-five thousand for the Health Department grant match. I remember you talking about this briefly, but I guess three points. That one forty-five, is it going after the same amount of money, more money? So what would the total be if it was awarded?
From memory, it's roughly a four hundred thousand dollar project that we're paying one forty-five on.
One forty-five of the four hundred?
Roughly, yes.
Okay. I guess the other thing, these utility grants we were talking about were not competitive, but we had to apply for them. Is this also non-competitive? I mean, there's a chance we may, the reason why I asked if it's competitive, don't get it...
Talking about the Health Department, the Health Department? No, it's automatic. As a matter of fact...
So the one forty-five is a done deal?
It, it's, it's a done deal, right, in the new budget.
And I guess the, there's no criteria. I mean, is the grant specifically going after something, equipment or tools or something?
They're doing an update to the, the doctor's offices in that section of the building. They had done another section and now that, the section that had water damage, that end of the building, and it's about a four hundred thousand dollar update to the building, you might say. And it's our building, by the way, but the state says, we're willing to put this money in if you'll put this in. And they do everything in the name of a grant.
The reason I ask is, I say we, that, a lot of money was spent getting COVID ready by the glasses.
They're also doing one before the budget ends of putting a covered thing. Remember they had to put the tents up before they got money to do a covered thing? And that'll be happening between now and the end of this, but yeah. It's a, an awning that's really an addition to the building. But this here is a much bigger project that'll be after July.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry to go back on that. But that's the one I recognized there. Next, Mr. Chairman, this Saturday and I believe the next week or two, if not earlier, a lot of graduations are gonna happen. Our high school kids, the university, what I understand, will have the largest graduating class this Saturday. So we're gonna have a lot of visitors coming into Cleveland and Bradley County over the next day and as well as Cleveland State. For those young folks who are graduating, Cleveland State, I wanna congratulate them all and wish them all well. When they walk across that stage, I'm sure they're very proud. But as soon as they get to that last step, as I told them, my oldest is gonna be graduating this Friday. You get your quote unquote PhD, now you gotta get your J O B. So, time to go to work.
Amen to that.
Next, also, I guess, thank Lori for all what she does. Guys didn't know it, probably would've had about a three hour Finance Committee today, except that Lori talked me out of it. I'm just kidding. But thank you, Lori, for all you do. I appreciate it and all the feedback, good and bad. Last, Commissioner Gilbert, I was just wondering if that donut reward applies to husbands that have wives that are nurses?
You've took your wife's food before.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have. I walked, I walked right into that one.
Oh, man. Jeez. Was that all, Commissioner Blake? I think that was enough. Very well done, Commissioner Gilbert. Commissioner Alford?
Yes, District Second, District Second District's doing well. I have two, all of you have a letter, two letters in front of you actually referencing a couple of things that we need to get done tonight for time's sake. So we were to require ten votes on these two items that I'm gonna bring up. The first one's, Mr. Chairman, each of us have a copy of the letter from Captain Joe Collins of the Sheriff's Office requesting retire K-9 Deputy Joker. After seven years of distinguished and honorable service, Joker was injured in the line of duty sustaining several gunshot wounds in pursuit of auto burglary suspect twenty-one. An event gathered intending many repel, compelled the leaders of our state to pass Joker's Law, strengthening the penalty for harming a police dog. His dedication, dedicated partner, Eduardo...
Eduardo.
Eduardo Schott is willing to take possession of Joker and assume all responsibilities, liabilities, costs associated with the care of Mr., Mr., his care. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we retire K-9 Joker, Deputy Joker, and to transfer ownership of Joker to Deputy Schott. I'd like to place that up for a vote, please.
Commissioner Hughes on the second. Open for discussion.
Great move.
Call the roll, please.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Thirteen in favor, none opposed, and one absent.
The second item is, last week at our work session, several of us wished Sergeant Keith Edwards well and congratulations on his nearing retirement. Sergeant Edwards, with forty years of service exceeds their policy of, on retiring deputy service weapons criteria. You have a copy of the letter submitted by the Sheriff's Office requesting to release the weapon, a Glock Model Twenty-two, serial number N V T seven nine zero, to Sergeant Edwards. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to place this on the, to be, to move his weapon to him.
Commissioner Winters on the second. Open for discussion. Call the roll, please.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Thirteen in favor, none opposed, and one absent.
Thank you, Chairman. I kept it under five minutes, so we move on.
You've got, you're in first place right now. Commissioner Hughes.
Mr. Chairman, I think I can beat this because honestly, I've had prom and graduation planning going on, so I've been out of pocket a little bit, but I have nothing to report.
My goodness. Commissioner Beatty.
A good friend of mine, y'all know him, Judge Field, passed away on Saturday. And I'd like all of you to have your family in their prayers. And another item, I went down to Pine Hill Church of God on Saturday, and they had a lot of good gospel music last Saturday. And then I went up to Relay, I got a while, then I watched Tommy eat ice cream. And another item I got, a lot of people has complained about the internet service off Lower River Road on Napalm Valley Road. They got a charter down there. It comes part way up Napalm Valley Road and the other comes from Springs with volunteer electric. But they ain't got good service at all on phones or nothing. They really need it bad. And then another thing, I'd like to request a landfill committee.
Okay. Lori Hous, the landfill.
Commissioner Thompson.
That's what I was thinking. He's in, can you give me the time per hour to get back from goofing off down at Gulf Shore? And we'll get him, get him back up here and get him to work.
Okay.
We'll get it set up. Anything else, sir?
That's it.
Oh, that's it?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I failed to mention that the Education Committee will meet next Tuesday, May the ninth at three thirty in this commission room.
Right. All right. That takes care of the reports from the Commissioner Committees and our districts. Approval of the agenda, there's nothing to approve. Communication from the audience, is there anyone here that would like to address the county commission? Going once, twice, three times. Okay, the announcements, next meeting, work session, May the eighth at twelve PM, Bradley County Courthouse. Keith Edwards Retirement Party, May the fourth at noon in the Sheriff's Office. The Juvenile Mentor Program, May the eighteenth at nine AM. And we will get a landfill committee as soon as Howard gets back from vacation.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I have one thing, if you could, add to the announcements. Next week, the career, the Cleveland Area Leap Grant, idea Leap Grant will be taking place at the Pi Center. And thanks Bradley County Schools for letting this happen. But three local businesses will be pitching their business for over fifty thousand dollars in grants. This is coming from the Cleveland Chamber of Commerce that's supporting this, along with TVFCU as well. It's, starts, the pitch starts at six to eight. And there's hors d'oeuvres and drinks and music and networking, starting at five. But they wanted to invite all commissioners out to it, to be a part of it. So I just wanted to add that to the announcements for this week and next week as well.